Thank you, we'd like to call to order the Maricopa City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, October 2nd. We're going to go ahead and call to order this meeting, and first off, we'd like to start with an invocation by Jeff Gamble from the LDS Maricopa Fifth Ward. All please stand.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are thankful to be here this evening at the City Council Meeting. We are truly thankful for the freedoms that we have and for the land that we have, and we're thankful for all the blessings that we do have. We're also so thankful for the people that are giving of their time, their talents, and all that they have to help this community improve. We ask a special prayer this evening that Thy Spirit will be with each and every one of the people that are here this evening, so that we can improve this community and do the things that Thy would have us do. We ask a special prayer this evening on the families of the people that are here, that as they are away, that their families will be taken care of and protected. Again, we are truly thankful for all of our many blessings, and we say these things in Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Chief Brandon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move right into the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Councilmember Markione?
Here.
Councilmember Potter?
Present.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. If you're following along on the agenda, we're on item number three, Proclaimations, and we do have a proclamation this evening from on and about the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, Tori, if you would mind, please, coming up, we're going to go ahead and present this and bring anyone you would like to.
If you can, please, to stand and recognize them, if they get one too much.
Thank you. So, this is the proclamation we have for this evening. This is a nice little bound, well, it's not bound, I guess it's on nice paper, but you get to say cool words like whereas, you've never said whereas as many times as you do in a proclamation. So, I'm going to go ahead and read this to you. It says, "Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2012. Whereas violence against women and children continues to become more prevalent as a social problem due to the imbalance of power due to gender and age, and whereas all Arizonans are affected by domestic violence, directly or indirectly, with more than 1 million victims seeking medical assistance for injuries caused by battering, and whereas the problem of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cross all economic, racial, affectional preference, and societal barriers, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and whereas battered women have been in the forefront in efforts to bring peace and equality to the home, and whereas this community recognizes the vital importance of increasing the general public's awareness and support of agencies providing services to domestic violence victims and perpetrators, and whereas we hold forth a vision of a community free from domestic violence, and now therefore, I, Christian Price, Mayor of the City of Maricopa, proclaim the month of October 2012 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month." Thank you. Congratulations. Also of note, we have former Mayor Kelly Anderson in the audience. I know he hates to be recognized, so that's all the more reason to recognize him. Thank you very much for being here. Perfect. We'll move on to a report from the mayor on number four. Couple of things here, we have a variety of different things to announce. First off, I want to, if you follow the City Council meetings here as of late, we wanted to announce that the City Council Work Session Regarding the Request for Proposal Process for Operation of the City's New Multi-Generational Center will be held Monday, October 15th at 6:00 PM in this building. Again, Monday, October 15th at 6:00 PM, want to invite all to participate and to come. We wanted the opportunity for as many people to be here as possible, so they can hear the discussion, so appreciate that. Again, at 6:00 PM on the 15th, Monday. Also wanted to recognize some very special members of our audience tonight. First off, we have the Maricopa 13 through 16-year-old girls softball All-Star team. Would they stand to be recognized, please? They're being recognized this evening because they won the district championship and finished third in the state championships. With them is their team manager, David Chavez. So, again, thank you very much, and congratulations. With us tonight, we also have another All-Star team. They won the district championship and went to the state competition, and this is the Maricopa Little League Baseball 9- and 10-year-olds All-Star team. Would they stand to be recognized? With them is their team manager, Chris Sarapo. Some interesting highlights about Mr. Sarapo, he was recently named by the Arizona Diamondbacks as their Coach of the Month in recognition to his service coaching the Little League Majors Team, the All-Star Team, a T-Ball Team, and the Challenger League, which is a T-Ball Team for the mentally challenged kids. During the game where he was honored, Mr. Sarapo wore his Maricopa All-Star shirt and gave the City of Maricopa a little extra street cred, so we appreciate that. Thank you again, and congratulations to each of you. We also have some things that we wanted to discuss on the Shop Local program. If you guys aren't aware of what the Shop Local program here is in Maricopa, the City of Maricopa is encouraging residents to keep their dollars in the community whenever possible by shopping local and supporting local businesses. The numbers demonstrate the strong benefits this can yield. In general, 73 out of every $100 spent at a locally-owned business remains in the community, as opposed to only 43 out of that same 100 in a non-locally-owned business. When you shop local, you're directly supporting community parks, programs, safety services, and local amenities. If you have additional questions about this program, feel free to visit our website at www.mericopa-az.gov, or you can contact City Hall, and we'd love to tell you more about this program. Tonight, we do have a winner in our Shop Local program, as we do have a drawing every month or so, and at this time, we have a total spent in September of $3,493 from the participants in this program. So, we're going to draw a winner tonight. Vice Mayor, would you pick the winner for me, please? And the winner is Samara Casper. So, Samara Casper. There we go. Thank you very much, we encourage you to see Latricia. Perfect. With that, I think that concludes the report from the mayor, oh, excuse me, I almost got in trouble there. I wanted to mention Stagecoach Days, I believe it'll be mentioned again, called to public, but I wanted to mention Stagecoach Days is coming up, and so I plan for a fun-filled weekend of a lot of activities, and that will be explained further, so we'll go from there. With that, we'll move to the report from the city manager. Nothing from the report from the city manager. At this time, we'd like to open the call to the public. At this time, we'd like you to be able to come over here to the podium, we encourage you to offer up your words of wisdom and advice to the City Council, as well as understand that at this time, because it is not agendized, many of the topics and items you may choose to discuss is a one-way conversation from you to us, so we will listen quietly and patiently, and we appreciate your input. Please limit your comments to three to five minutes. Thank you.
Mayor Price, members of the council, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Steve Chestnut, I'm the new Superintendent of Schools for Maricopa Unified School District, and I would like to let you know that on November 6th, one of the issues on the ballot will be the override proposal for the Maricopa Unified School District. This ballot proposal was approved by our governing board and has been placed on the ballot. The proposal is for a 5% override, essentially a 5% budget extension for two years. It is quite different from the proposal one year ago, which was a 15% override proposal for seven years. This project, this override, if approved, would fund five things and five things only. Number one, additional teachers to reduce class size. $650,000 of the funds would be allocated for that purpose. That would allow us to hire 13 additional classroom teachers for the purpose of reducing class size. Number two, expansion of our blended learning program. $250,000 would be allocated for that. Blended learning is a new program we started this year at Maricopa Wells Middle School, includes 66 through 8th grade students, and it's been very successful. We know there will be more demand for seats in that program. This would allow us to essentially double the number of seats available in that program. Number three, the funds would be used to purchase additional instructional technology for classroom use. There's two main areas of need in the area of instructional technology. One would be the purchase of electronic readers. The price of texts continues to go up. Our high school chemistry texts are up to $150 apiece for our advanced placement chemistry texts, and we can purchase digital copies for much less, $10 to $15 per copy. We think this would be a good investment and something that we could implement in certain classes over the years at the secondary level. The fourth thing we'd spend the funds for would be improved retention of teachers via partial reinstatement of the teacher's salary schedule. $150,000 would be allocated to that purpose each year. And as you may know, for the last five years, the salary schedule for teachers in Maricopa Unified School District has been frozen on the experience factor. The only way that a teacher could get a raise would be to earn additional credits or a master's degree. And as a result then, we have lost many teachers from our school district because they can get an immediate five-step bump by going to Chandler or some other neighboring school district, and this would partially reinstate a small portion of the teacher's salary schedule. And then, number five, the final thing we would use these funds for would be improved retention of classified staff via 2% cost of living adjustment. $150,000 will be allocated for that purpose. And for the last five years, classified salaries have been totally frozen in Maricopa Unified School District. That's approximately 240 staff members. We know the cost of living has not remained frozen. It's made it difficult to retain and recruit new staff members in those key positions. Our custodians, our paraprofessionals, our secretaries, our maintenance workers, bus drivers, people we really cannot do without in running our school district are deserving of that cost of living adjustment. So, if the budget override is approved, we would be able to fund those five things. The costs would be 57 and a half cents per $1,000 of assessment, so if your home is valued by the county assessor at $100,000, the annual bill to you as a taxpayer would be $57.50. And so, that would raise a total of $1.35 million in revenue each year, and then if it is not renewed, it would go to zero in year three. So, Arizona allows me to advocate for this because I'm off work time, and I would like to encourage the council and the citizens of Maricopa to join me in voting yes on November 6th for the Maricopa Unified School District Budget Override Proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Tony. I live in Rancho El Dorado. I would like to propose tonight an addition to the Aquatic Center that is in planning stages right now. I looked into it, and one thing that I think would be very nice there, a good addition, would be a stationary wave. And for those of you on the council and in the audience who aren't aware of what that is, it's a pool with a pump on one end that flows water, creates a wave in the middle. It allows people to surf in a pool. Everyone that I've talked to, at my work, in my community, neighbors, family, friends, they all think it's a good idea. I've never met somebody who has tried surfing that hated it. I know that there's one in San Diego that people visit across the country. They'll travel to San Diego for that stationary wave. Had we something like that here in Maricopa, I don't know about bringing people from across the nation, but at least from all around Arizona, they would come to Maricopa at least for the stationary wave. As for the admission or pricing costing, I wanted to come more prepared with how much it costs to operate, maintain, and what a good pricing system would be for this, but the company I found that develops them, they didn't get back to me in time, so maybe next time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Peg Chapados. I'm here tonight to announce our very first annual November Fest. We are partnering with Maricopa Rotary, and this is something that myself and Therese Starkey are going to be partnering with to form what's called the Maricopa Beautification Program. It's something that I know a couple of you are aware of, but it's going to be something, hopefully, that we will be able to present to you before the end of the year. But anyway, it's November Fest, Saturday, November 17th, from 6:00 to 10:00 at the Silver Spur at the Duke in Rancho El Dorado. There's going to be brats, Polish sausage, hot dogs, chips, and beer sampling. We have two different breweries that have partnered with the Duke that are going to be offering a variety of beer samples. Tickets are $35 a person. You can buy tickets from any Maricopa Rotarian, at Great Western Bank, at the Headquarters Restaurant, and we also are going to have music by Positive Attitude, so you can buy tickets from any of the band members as well. So, again, Saturday, November 17th, 6:00 to 10:00 PM at the Duke. We hope you all come out and have a great time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Chastain, I think most of you might know. I want to start out just on a positive note. I really want to thank council for all the time and effort that they put into making this community better. So many times, you get more garbage than you get gratitude, and I just want to take this time and thank you for your time and effort for this community. That said, I wish I was here under better circumstances. I am here to request the resignation of Councilman Markione. As many know, you know, staff is fairly upset with the investigation that has gone on, but there's not a whole lot that U.S. Council can do. The city didn't hire you, U.S. Councilmember. The community hired you, voted you in, and hired you. It's our job also to fire you. And so, without the resignation of Councilman Markione, unfortunately, at some point, we're going to have to fire him through a recall election if he doesn't resign. This council, the city, needs to heal, and it needs to move on, and to do that, Councilman Markione needs to resign. The effectiveness of him as a council member has been tremendously diminished. He needs to be chaperoned when he's in city meetings with staff, in City Hall. His effectiveness is less, his chaperones effectiveness is less, because he's got to do that instead of his own job. When staff have to work with Councilman Markione, those emotions and feelings come back up, and they're less effective and efficient in their own jobs. Again, the city needs to heal, and to do that, and move forward, and to do that, Councilman Markione needs to resign, and I request that you resign. If not, the city is going to have to fire you through a recall election, so that we protect our own, our staff, and our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counselor, would you like to respond?
I would say thank you very much for your comments. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Wade?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I stand before you in support of the override agenda that's before us. As a parent, as a grandparent, as a home that has no children at this time, I'm still in support of our schools here in Maricopa. I believe that in order for us to grow, we have to have a quality workforce, an educated workforce, and whatever we can do as a community to support that effort, I believe we should take all steps to do so. So, again, I come to you as someone without children, at this time, children in the home, grandchildren, grandchildren who were part of the Maricopa School District at one time. So, I saw the school from firsthand experience, and so I believe that we need to take that action to make sure that we support our children. If we don't, then it's on us. The least of those that we take care of, we'll get the best out of that. So, our children are the best that we can take care of. So, again, I stand in support of that override. I've signed my name to the tree, and I'm hoping that the rest of the community will do the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. It's done.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's with great pleasure that I come before you this evening to talk about, everyone say it together.
Stagecoach Days.
That's it? Come on, just a little bit more enthusiasm. What are we talking about?
Stagecoach Days.
Woo! Okay. So, Stagecoach Days, we are so excited, and I honestly cannot tell you how many groups have come forward to participate in what we remember, you know, 20 years ago as Stagecoach Days. Stagecoach Days is 53 years old, and we remember this great time where our families and community got together, and now that is just compounded exponentially. And so, we are so excited that all of the activities are taking place. First of all, I have to tell you that you challenged us with helping to pay for this, and the community is stepping forward. Now, I know you're in strategic planning, and I don't want you to cut the whole budget, but we are trying to hold our own as a community. I am so excited to announce that we do have a title sponsor for possibly more than one event, but for this event, and that title sponsor is CenturyLink. And so, we are so excited for that opportunity to help them gain more brand recognition in our community and gain greater recognition. So, their name will become part of the title of Maricopa Stagecoach Days, and so that's part of the honor of stepping up to that plate. And so, other sponsors include State Farm Insurance. Both Lance Lane and Courtney Tyler have joined together in that effort. We also have Jones Auto, and then Harrah's Auction Casino is sponsoring the Rotary Street Dance, which is going to be a great opportunity to get together. And then, let's see, and then we have Jones Auto, and of course, MUSD is helping us with the shuttle transportation. That is an agreement, but we have to recognize that those bus drivers are going to step out and help us that night. So, Stagecoach Days starts off with the Grape Escape. If you haven't bought your ticket yet, how many people have bought your tickets for the wine tasting? Woo-hoo! We are going to have a great time. There is great food, there is great drinks, not to hold anyone too accountable, but anyway. So, that we have going on Friday night. Laura Walsh is going to be the entertainment for that night, and so they're going to be playing the music. Frazier's Carnival is going to be coming into town. That's a different carnival company than we've had before. We will offer wristbands at maricopaforfun.com at a discounted rate, $15 for an all-ride wristband, which is a great deal. We also have community performances from all of our local groups. The Mini Miss Maricopa Contest is on Friday night. Of course, the Street Dance. Now, the Street Dance, I'm really excited about. We have Jones bringing in trucks, and we're going to sit on tailgates and dance and do all those things that we did when we were kids. So, if you ever have any memories of doing that when you're a kid, this is a fun time to do that. It's a free event that night. Rotary, of course, will be there, and Harrah's, and State Farm, and lots of folks. So, then Saturday morning, bright and early, you can run in the 5K Run, that's sponsored by Against Abuse. That's a great fundraiser, Shane's going to run in that. Frazier's, and so is Diane. Diane, anyone else running in the 5K? 5K? Woo! Okay. And then, let's see, and then we have the shuttles, and then Positive Attitude, the Motown Band. So, if your childhood takes you back to Motown and not Stagecoach Days, then we got to mix up both for you. So, let's see, and then, of course, we have the Historical Society Golf Tournament on Sunday morning, and then the carnival again, and then we have an all-church, all-faith performances Sunday afternoon. So, big church picnic. So, if you imagine in gazebos and folks coming out and listening to great music and trying to get to know their faith community, this is a great opportunity. And then, if you just want to hear political candidates get up on their stump, I've told Will, he must make a stump, so that political candidates like Mr. Wade can get on it. So, and tell us everything about, and if that doesn't excite you, then we have a motorcycle rally for that. So, anyway, anyone that wants to mix politics and religion and motorcycles and all of our town together, we're going to do that, okay? So, if nothing else, this is going to be highly, highly entertaining, okay? And so, for all this fun, go to maricopaforfun.com, get your booths, get them early, because we're slating spots right now, and I know you all want to have a good spot. So, thank you very much for endorsing and making these events happen, and when you're doing your strategic planning, I can do great things, but save a little piece in there for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor. My name is Shane Dunn. My personal favorite for the Stagecoach Days is the carnival and the dance. I've always liked to dance and have fun at the carnival. Thank you, good night.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Shane.
Just an extra plug, thank you very much, Cindy, I appreciate that. We are doing the 5K Stop the Violence Run, it's our second annual, and it's more about the awareness, stopping the violence in our neighborhoods, our schools, and our homes. So, it's a great way to come and participate. It is Saturday morning, the 20th. Registration starts at 7:00. You can pre-register, it's $20 if you register beforehand per person. This year, we're doing a team entry fee, so if you enter as a team, which is three or more people, it would only be $10 a person, and then we're giving prizes for the largest team, and then the team with the most creative race attire to make it fun. So, we have several businesses. You can get registration forms at Anytime Fitness, and you can also go to racetimers.com, who is one of our sponsors, and it will be officially timed. So, we've got some runners coming in from Phoenix and from Tempe. So, it's a great way to have your families come out. It's a one-mile walk, if you don't want to do the 5K, Chief Stahl, I know you were worried about it, but there is a one-mile walk, and it's going to be a beautiful morning, and we've already started taking registration, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Farrell, and council members. My name is Therese Starkey, I'm president of Maricopa Seniors. Once again, we are very, very proud to be able to bring a Night of Remembrance once again to Maricopa. We have all lost family members, either spouses, parents, grandparents, children, relatives, or friends, and especially this time of the year, once we get close to the holidays, they seem to be coming into our thoughts more and more. And so many of us have made Maricopa our home, that we're not around other family members to share memories with, or to go to cemeteries, or whatever we do during the holiday season. So, the Night of Remembrance is going to be a photographic tribute to all our loved ones. Okay? You'll submit your pictures to me, and we will take them over to the high school. We have the greatest kids there are at the Maricopa High School that will take these pictures, and we will put them on to do a photographic for all our loved ones. Now, we have two discs. One is for family and friends and all the loved ones, and then the other disc that you could request to have the pictures put on will be for heroes. And all the heroes are all of our veterans who've ever served in any of the armed forces, all our first responders, police, firemen, and you can put them, give me those pictures, and I'll make sure that they go on the heroes tape. So, it's going to be on December 2nd at Maricopa Wells Middle School, right down the street from the high school, at 6:00 PM. We have some great sponsors, Hospice of the Valley, which will be there to have, if anybody wants to join a support group or anything, and they will have all kinds of brochures on it. We have the Compassionate Friends, which is an organization for just parents that have lost children, that will also be there to offer some support if somebody wants to know about that organization, and of course, Maricopa School District that is helping us put this event on so much. So, this event is done with so much love and so much respect for all your family members, for all your friends, and it's just a beautiful, beautiful tribute to remember them. for all your friends, and it's just a beautiful, beautiful tribute to remember them. The closing is, well, not by candlelight, since we can't light candles in the school, but we do use glow sticks, and it is, it's a beautiful, beautiful event. So if you want to get in touch with me, we're at maricopaseniors.org, or you can look up in the Yellow Pages, we're under nonprofit organizations, and I'll be happy to help you to pick up the pictures and to get them all ready. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Trace. Anyone else? I'd depurge the podium for Call the Public. Ms. Ortega.
Good evening. I'm Joanna Ortega, and I'm a resident of the city of Maricopa, and I represent several professional women in the community, including Leslie Carlisle Burnett, who's standing next to me. I'd like to read an email that I sent to Councilwoman Marchionne for the record. "It is with the deepest regret that I find that I must join many others in our community in requesting your resignation from the City Council. Because of the recent investigation and fallout from that same investigation, it appears to me that your effectiveness has been severely curtailed. It will be difficult for you to continue to serve on the council and not have the recollections of these incidents affect the people you work with and represent. If you choose to continue serving, here are some of the potential outcomes. The cost of these investigations will rise, causing a reallocation of dollars intended for community programs. The process will hinder our city's future economic development efforts. City employees may feel less than appreciated and undervalued. Potential costly lawsuits against the city. And last, costly use of the city manager's time to accompany you on city business that normally would not require her presence. Please ask yourself if you'd be willing to engage these potential outcomes if it were someone else on the council involved in this situation. I hope and pray that you understand why this and numerous other similar requests are being made of you. Can you accept that by removing yourself from the City Council, you will allow city business to move forward unencumbered by this situation? That our valued city employees will feel that their concerns have been heard and their fears immediately alleviated? That it's time to really think of your community and how you can best serve rather than be a distraction? I ask that you consider taking this action with the clear mind as to where the focus of our community needs to be to best serve its citizens." End of email. On 9/11, you and I spoke regarding my email, and you related that the information put out regarding this issue was, quote, "media hype," that, end of quote, "that would go away." I don't agree with this statement, and I would ask that others in this forum to stand if they too believe that you should no longer serve on the City Council. Do these faces look like they would be taken in by media hype? I retired from DPS, but before that, most of my career was in social services, and for many years, I worked with men and women and teens, helping them to overcome issues that prevented them from self-sufficiency, issues involving trust such as bullying, harassment, domestic violence, and sexual abuse, just to name a few. Their apprehension and fear were similar to that expressed by our valued city employees. As we all know, eventually, these stressors can manifest themselves in lost productivity due to symptoms such as physical illness or even a lack of desire to come to work. Eventually, those affected by these issues may decide to look for other jobs or just quit working altogether. This is another potential cost to the city, one that I don't believe would be of any benefit to anyone. Something else that I want everyone to think about, what if this situation involved and affected your wife, daughter, or other person that you loved or respected? What would you do? In closing, to set the matter straight, we are not going to go away. We are going to keep this matter front and center until you do what we believe is the right thing. So again, Councilwoman Marchionne, we ask that you resign your seat on the City Council immediately so that our city can continue to have a bright and prosperous future. Thank you.
Do you wish to respond?
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments. You know, I've always been so kind and courteous to Mrs. Ortega. I realize that, first of all, when you refer to the statement or the terminology of media hype, I never referenced it in the meaning that it didn't mean anything or that I didn't take it serious. There's been some really strong statements that have been made about me since this particular investigation results were released that have been unfair and really just character assassination. And I think that there have been some folks in the community who have taken advantage of this opportunity to jump on the political opportunity, to jump on the bandwagon here. And the idea that, first of all, I don't threaten anybody. I don't run around antagonizing or threatening anybody. And this is really, in my personal opinion, has gotten a little bit out of hand. And I've made a lot of personal sacrifices, Ms. Ortega, to this community, a lot, a lot of time away from my family and my children, 200 hours of my own personal holiday and vacation time taken from work to be able to attend meetings for city business. It's cost me money some months to be able to be a council member, and I have served faithfully. You know, a little statement here. Since the conclusion of the investigations, I've been the subject of personal attacks by a few people. Although some continue to attack me personally, they can't attack my record of performance as your elected City Council member. I've been faithfully doing the job you elected me to do. I've championed some difficult policy directions and decisions in the last two years and have been a strong voice in delivering to balanced budgets, and have always represented the best interests of the taxpayers of our city. I apologize for any misunderstandings that led to these now completed investigations, and I look forward to continuing my duties as your councilman. You elected me to represent your interests, and I will continue fulfilling that obligation to the citizens of Maricopa. Unless God has a different plan for me, I will not be resigning this position. You can come back again and again, and you will receive the same answer. I've always been very kind to you, and there's a number of folks who've attacked me in the community who have never taken a moment of their time to contact me to talk to me personally. I specifically did not submit any written documentation as a part of these investigations purposefully, so that I wouldn't reveal the personal information of others, and that this way they wouldn't become public record. I did it on purpose. But the results of the investigations speak for themselves. I have served honorably. I think that some of the comments that have been made about me in the local media and folks in the community, they're hurtful. Don't get me wrong, they hurt. They're hard to deal with. I'm human, just like anyone else. I'm a member of this council, I work full-time and support my children, I'm a single father. You don't think this hurts? You don't think that it has an effect on me personally? To know that people such as yourself, who I've always been kind and generous to and have been cordial with, without even talking to you, would come and make such statements about me? It's easy to get really hooked up into soundbites from the local media or folks who don't have all the facts, but the idea is, I think that this discussion and argument's been a little bit one-sided. And I will not be resigning this position, but I do respect your ability to freedom of speech, and I thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did have a question to the attorney. Are the investigations, as Mr. Marchionne has stated, are they both over?
No, no, there's, there's--
There's still pending investigation.
Right, there's an investig, there's one investigation left, the one councilwoman that you filed against Councilwoman Marchionne. I think that should, we should get a report fairly soon, so--
So my investigation isn't over yet. Thank you.
Okay. Any other that would like to come and approach the council in the Call to the Public? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close that, and move on to item 7.1. 7.1 and 7.2, approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries. There are no public hearings at this meeting, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Having seen no one with questions and concerns on the previous work session, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Moving on to the regular agenda, item 10.1. The mayor and city councils shall discuss and possibly take action on appointing two members of, to the Heritage District Citizens Advisory Committee and one member to the Board of Adjustments. This is for discussion and action. Now, we pretty much ready to move on this as we did this at the last meeting, so we'll start in the Heritage District, and we'll start with Councilman Potter, and move to Councilwoman Marchionne.
Rosalind O'Haire.
Mrs. Lucia Rodriguez.
Rosie O'Haire and Mrs. Lucia Rodriguez for the Heritage District. Any questions, concerns, council? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and finally, we move to Councilmember Brown with his Board of Adjustments appointment.
I'm appointing Bob Marsh.
Bob Marsh to the Board of Adjustments. Any questions, discussion on that, council? If not, can I have a motion to approve, please?
So move.
Have a motion, can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carry. Thank you very much, councilmembers, for those appointments. Moving on to item 10.2, I'm not reading this whole thing. Mayor and city councils shall discuss and possibly take action to approve a contract amendment with FCI Constructors, Inc. for Design Build Construction Services in amount not to exceed $2.4 million. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, this is a contract amendment to award the guaranteed maximum price for construction for the Chief Donald N. Pierce Fire Station. This is a design build contract, and as I stated, it's a guaranteed maximum price for construction. That guaranteed maximum price includes an owner's contingency in it, among other things. I do have representatives from the project, I have Al Sanchez with FCI Constructors, as well as Bruce Scott with HDA Architects in the crowd. I would like to thank them for their hard work. We've put a lot of time in this project the last couple months to get it back on track, and they've worked hard and done a good job doing so. We had a successful sub-bidding process that is their process, but the city gets to be involved as part, as part of the contract, how the contract is written. And I also want to highlight a few things about the project, you know, this is a, this fire station is being built in the Heritage District, which is nice. It has a community room for the community to use. It will begin infrastructure improvements for the Estraya Gin Site, the future business park that economic development is working on. So we are extending roughly 700 feet of roadway improvements, full-street improvements for Edison Road, as well as water and sewer mains. One thing that you might have noticed with the closure of Wilson Avenue here these last few days, the reason for that is, is that Global Water, as part of their, the MOU with Global Water, Global Water is extending water and sewer mains down Edison Road to get it, to get the water and sewer to our property line, and then we'll take it from there. So that's fulfilling the obligation that they have with the MOU amendment that has been approved with them. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Council, questions on this?
Brad, how many respondents were there for this bid?
This particular contract award was done several months ago. This is a design build, so it is, it was awarded at the very beginning of the project. It's awarded to the contractor where the designer is contracted under the, under the general contractor.
The general contractor?
Yeah. So the particular bidding process that has occurred recently is a part of the contractor's process to where they are required to get up to three qualified bids per trade. And like I said, it's their selection, but the contract is written to where the city is involved. I did attend a meeting at their office where they were reviewing bids. You know, several local contractors got invitations to bid, and quite a few of them did, did submit. So there is a very good chance that we have a couple local subcontractors on this job. But, but the, the actual solicitation to hire FCI Constructors was done a long time ago, as a qualification-based selection.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, concerns? Yes, Councilmember.
Can you give me an example, Brad, of what, what you would use the contingency for?
So the owner's contingency is, is controlled by the city, and it would be for items above and beyond the scope of work today. So things that, that the fire department, for instance, would like to see added along the way, or it would cover any kind of unforeseen conditions, like what you would typically see a change order for, for a hard bid, traditional method, delivery. So instead of coming to you for, for a contract to mimic for a change order because they saw something occurred out in the field, you know, they dug something up when doing grading work, the owner's contingency can cover things of that nature as well. So it's specifically what we want to add along as the project's going on, and then to cover unforeseen conditions.
Thanks.
Just to follow up on that, I mean, that's, that's the whole point of a guaranteed maximum price, right, is that we've set this, that if it goes above that, then, you know, the contractors are eating that, and it's not, it's not on us, it's not on the city. So, you know, back, back to that contingency, just for clarification purposes, the contingency in this particular case is for us, the owners of the property, who decide to make a change. Because as it stands right now, we've told the, we've told the construction teams that this is what we want, but yet if something should occur, then, again, that's, that's on our side. That's not the, you know, a change order typically that would have come from that 10% contingency.
That, that's correct. There is risk involved that the contractor has on a design build with a guaranteed maximum price. They also have their own contingency built into this to where they cover some of that risk. But you are correct, the owner's contingency is for us to make decisions on, for the most part, let's hope, adds.
Perfect. Any other questions, concerns, discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Thank you, Brad. Item 10.3, the mayor and city councils shall discuss and possibly take action on creating a bicycle donation program for the repair and distribution of unclaimed bicycles recovered by the City of Maricopa Police Department. This item is for discussion and action. Paul.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, coming before you tonight to talk about a request that staff has. What we're talking about tonight, just to clarify the request, is the creation, is to create a program that will allow us to donate unclaimed bicycles, bicycles held by the police department, to a nonprofit organization that will repair and distribute those bicycles to local eligible children. That's a good summation of what we're talking about. Now, let me go into a little bit of history here. Currently, the Maricopa Police Department comes across into possession between three and five bicycles a month, or about 60 a year. These are bicycles that are, are involved in a police investigation and then are released and unclaimed, or these are bicycles that are picked up through the everyday cycle of work where a resident will find a bicycle abandoned, Maricopa PD will come out, collect that bicycle, bring it back, and, and hold that, and they go unclaimed. Currently, we have been disposing of these through a private contract to auction them, and they pick these up, and roughly, we receive about $10 a bicycle. We don't have any control as to who selects those and what happens to those bicycles. They just, they go to, through the auction company. The suggestion has been, well, let me see, go, let me see here. Now, just a little background on how this operates legally. Arizona state law allows the Maricopa Police Department to, to donate unclaimed property under $150 value for, after a 30-day period of holding them. We have investigated options for donating unclaimed bicycles to a nonprofit for distribution to children, and, and there are people out there who are willing to take this on. Best practices for the city to pull, to do this is to go ahead and do an RFP, do a competitive solicitation where, where people will propose how they would manage this donation program to distribute this-- to distribute these bicycles and repair them. We don't want to just, you know, somebody comes up to us, "I'll do it," and we say, "Yes." I think it's, best practice is council manages this, council oversees it, and just to create the RFP, and then make that selection. So we do it in a fair and open process. So, the proposal from staff. We are, we are proposing the creation of a bicycle donation program. What staff would do would publish an RFP, ask a nonprofit to propose how they would administer the program in both repairing the bicycles and distributing bicycles. Council would be the one ranking the proposals, and then council would be the one at an open meeting making that selection. The RFP requirements. What we would ask in this RFP. The responding, the respondent must be a nonprofit organization, they have to have that status and the taxing, anything like that, couldn't just be an individual. They would need to explain to us how they would go about repairing the bicycles and ensuring the safety. We want them repaired to, to rideability. We don't want, you know, we just want it done right, these are children who'd be riding these. We want them to propose a viable plan for distributing these bicycles to the children. How will they notify people? How will they advertise this? Just to lay out that plan. And to explain the, how to verify eligibility. That's something that, that there's, there's ways to do that. We'd like to hear their ideas. Also on top of this, maintain the privacy of the children. This is, it'd be a program for children, and privacy is utmost. From these responses to this RFP, they would be scored on the following criteria. Does the, the proposal meet the requirements of the, of the request, the goals of the request? Do they meet all stated requirements? They offer a viable plan? Is it realistic? A methodology for distributing bicycles that makes sense will weigh that. And have they done anything like this in the past? I think the, the fact that they, it's not crucial, but it's nice to have somebody that has some experience. So, in conclusion, staff recommends council consider this question of donating bicycles to a nonprofit organization, rather than auctioning them off for the, for on average $10 a bicycle. And, and we ask staff to possibly direct us to, to launch this program.
Questions? Council, questions?
Is it your intention or the staff's intention to limit this nonprofit just to Maricopa nonprofits, or is it going to be open to others outside of the city?
I think that, I don't think that we can limit.
I've been thinking.
Yeah, to, to that. I, I think we can, we can focus on, on who they distribute to, but, but we have to be very careful on, on any, any limits. And I think we'll, staff, council will be able to see that in the proposal and take that on. But our, our hopes are always that local, that local people, local entities offer to do this, but we'll have to wait and see who, who applies.
Was there any thought given to advertising that these bikes are available as-is to purchase? So some fathers might pick up a bike and fix it themselves?
And no, because of the liability issue of, of doing the auction ourself and the liability if somebody buys that bicycle, and, and these bicycles are not always in the best shape. They, they've been through accidents, or they've been found abandoned, and, and so I think the liability issues on that, I think it would be unwise to just allow them to go that way. And then there's, there's oversight. I think for the, the return on investment for staff's time, it would be difficult.
Do you agree with that, chief?
Mayor.
Councilmember Brown.
While I, while I agree with that, there's also some legalities where if, if we can't just sell it to one individual, you would have to sell them in a lot or a batch of bicycles, and it would be hard for just one person to buy just one bicycle. The, the staff, staffing required to put together an entire auction and things like that to do it on our own, certainly that's one option, but the return on investment is nil. I would recommend that in the RFP, some wording be given in there where a priority on giving the bicycles back to our community would be of a high priority, maybe a point system where that gives extra points, so that the bicycles do come back. Whoever wins the bid, wins the bid, but we'd like to see those bicycles come back to our community.
Thank you.
Yes, councilmember. Paul.
Well, I got a question for the chief while he's still on the scan.
Is that okay? Oh, before you go.
Chief, just a curiosity question. You know, on, on the drive up to Payson, a little place called Rye right before Payson, there's like a big, huge bicycle graveyard. Is, is that related to this program, and you tour if they can't auction the bikes or something, are these bikes taken to that certain place?
Mayor.
Do you know the place I'm talking about?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, I, I do know which place you're talking about.
Thousands of them.
No, that's, that's not actually the graveyard for the valley. There's, there's other graveyards for the valley, unfortunately. That would just be the northern end of Arizona where a lot of those bicycles do end up because the parts are no longer usable, and, and they couldn't use those parts for any of the bicycles. But yes, I, I am aware of which you're talking about. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Paul, I'm, I'm trying to understand better a little bit behind the eligibility.
Okay.
How do we determine what makes a child eligible for, for a bicycle?
Well, our, our goal would be that they go to kids that are, that are, you know, don't have a bicycle and could really use bicycle. I mean, that's very iffy and not real concrete. We're, we haven't hashed out a best way of doing that. We're kind of looking for ideas of how this nonprofit proposes, a nonprofit proposes to, to filter that out and to come up with a viable methodology. I know that there, there are metrics that you can use and ways of determining that, but it, but you get into privacy issues, and, and so we're looking for someone to come up with a strong idea. Like I say, the way this RFP would be, there, there is no money changing hands or anything like that. If you can come up with a good plan that, that meets the goal of council, then we will, we will trust you with these bicycles and that they're distributed fairly. But you, you, you know, it's, it's a, it's a touchy area to say that one person's eligible, one's not. I defer to the experts.
Have the nonprofits applying for the RFP process determine their eligibility process as part of that RFP?
We, I have not had lengthy discussions with anybody on, on a possible eligibility other than possibly Mary.
Can we, can we have that included as part of the RFP process?
And, and if you would like us to, oh, go ahead.
Mayor and Councilmember Marchionne. In the past, what I've seen is the nonprofit organization that might win the RFP would be required to work very closely with MUSD, and MUSD and their staffing has a really good picture on who the needy children are and who the needy families are, much like shop with a cop during Christmas time and, and things, events like that where staff at the school systems really know who are the needy people, and they get, you know, so-called first opportunity at the bicycles.
Yeah. Right, sounds like a great program.
Yeah, councilwoman.
I was approached with this program by a nonprofit. What they wanted to do is they wanted to get these donated so they could give them to needy kids. And through the process, I did some investigation, and I found out that a lot of these bikes, like one out of five bikes are, is probably workable. You know, you have to fix a couple of things. So a lot of them are damaged. So with this organization, I went back with the information, I said, you know, "Well, if you're interested, these bikes aren't in the best shape, you're going to have to fix them." So then they said, "Well, if we get them donated, we'll start a program, we could fix them, and have the kids that are going to, the needy kids that are going to be donated to, we'll have them do a workshop, we'll get bicycle repairmen to come in, teach them how to maintain a bicycle, how to fix them, and go from there. We could donate it back to them, let them work on something that they will be owning in the future." So then I, this is when I approached, I brought this as a suggestion to see if it was feasible. And the fact that they're, they're not really, I mean, $10 apiece, I mean, this organization was determined, whether they get it from the city or not, they're determined to go to yard sales and pick up these bikes anyways. So, just to give you an idea where this idea came from.
So, just for a point of clarification there, I mean, when you sell them, that's what I read in the report, if you sell them, you typically get about 10 bucks per, you know, some higher, some lower, that's kind of an auction estimate. But if, if we're just talking about doing this program, rather than, you know, even taking in $10 per, we're just simply saying, "Here you go, here's the lot of them, fix them up."
Right.
And, and, you know, give them away and put them to better use in the end than what we would get for 600 bucks out of the year.
And the, and the nonprofit's going to have costs. They're going to have the cost of storing them, of doing the repairs, of buying the parts, of organizing and, and, you know, getting the word out. So they'll, they'll, they'll be cost, they'll be value-added by the nonprofit, and, and so the proposal, it's council's discretion, but the proposal is that we not ask for anything upfront for them, that, that we just, we do the donation and they provide all that elbow grease and legwork.
Well, and I have a, I have a question and proposal here for council in the fact that, you know, I like this program, I think it's a good idea, I think it's better than selling them, I think it's, you know, the, the end result is 10 times better. However, I guess my question is, is it something that we can just say, "Yes, go do this," and then turn this over to PRL and let them, you know, kind of vet further stuff on this? I mean, because the reality is, is I think if we're in agreement that, "Yeah, we want to do it," and turn it loose, I mean, do, do we need more oversight from us, or can we turn it over to PRL?
I think, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, purchasing laws, we have to go through a specific process, so we would consult with our purchases, purchasing officer to ensure that we comply with Arizona revised statutes with regard to disposal of property that's in the public possession. So we would do that. One of the things I was going to mention is I've seen this program in other cities, and what's happened there is it evolves, is that they'll oftentimes, a nonprofit will partner with a Home Depot, not Home Depot, a Walmart, or another company that might donate the parts to fix it and donate bicycles, and then it starts to grow, and often cases you'll see where new bikes start to be donated to the program. These kinds of programs really do take flight, and so it's, it's kind of an exciting thing. But the advantage of having an external party do it is that they can go out and raise those kind of funds, where if we're going down to Walmart and saying, "Can you donate parts?" Then, you know, it could be perceived as unethical.
Sure. Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? Yeah, Dennis, legal.
Mayor, members of council, I mean, I'm just looking at the statutes that deal with the disposal of unclaimed property, and it talks about that the city can dispose by other means of disposal, and I think this is the other means of disposal. So I think at the end of the day, however you want to proceed, it needs to be approved by council.
Okay. Okay, I guess that was my whole point, is that I think the council sets the policy and says, "Yes, we want the program, and yes, we want to do it." I mean, do we have to get in the weeds here with us, or can PRL do this, or do we just say, "Staff, go with it?"
Take the RFP.
Not to take it to the RFP?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, that's fine. Like I said, I'm agreeing with the program, so do you have any? I, I also like the idea of making sure that, that if they're coming from the Maricopa Police Department, that we try and put in some sort of, you know, qualifier that, you know, those that are local perhaps get first bids on them or those types of things.
One of the, we can add that as a request from council, and as long as we're in compliance with, it doesn't conflict with anything else, we can do that. Also, in the staff report, we had talked about making this the, the distribution eligible population be that of city of Maricopa or the Maricopa Unified School District boundaries, because there, there are many kids that do not live in the city that attend Maricopa Unified School District, and if, it's a, it's a thought that the, the school district will be a common thread for distribution of this, and, and we don't want to have some people within one school site ineligible because of where they live. That's why we're looking at the, at that area of the, of the district boundaries. So, so that's just a couple of details in the staff report. And so then to, if you'd like to, do we want to clarify the direction of council? Then, so we're going to move forward with doing the RFP. Concerned about the stipulations for extra points for local, and anything else that I missed on council direction on this? Anything else?
In addition to what the qualifier that the mayor mentioned, I would also state that any nonprofit that decides to take these bikes and chooses not to use them, but to transport them to the graveyard, Payson, and one of our chapters will be stated properly towards some of these bikes.
Well, and I, if, I know, I'm assuming that the bikes that aren't eligible to be actually fixed will become made into parts bicycles, and that will do that. We, we can spec, we can, we can put something in there for a description of how will they dispose, or what will they do with bicycles that, that aren't, don't meet the requirements that are just unfixable, and, and maybe if somebody's clever, they'll put the graveyard thing in there.
Well, I have a final question here, kind of for legal. I assume that once we dispose of them and we go through that process, that, you know, are we, are we absolving ourselves at that point of liability? I mean, I want to get in the legal weeds here, but.
Pardon?
Are we absolved of liability at that point? I mean, as I was reading through the staff reports, we're talking about installation of reflectors, front, back, and wheels, inspection of frames for cracks, tires, heat damage, aging brakes for functionality. I mean, that's what we're handing over. We're handing over a bunch of broken bikes to.
Right.
A nonprofit saying, "Here you go."
Well, yeah, even if the city was to hold a huge auction and sell all the bikes, they're still buying it as-is, whereas we're not guaranteeing the bikes any way, shape, or form. I mean, city's auction property all the time, and I don't think there's any guarantees that city say what they're selling is even viable. So people come and inspect and buy. So there's no liability to the city if we auction off the property, or if we enter into a program where we move the property to a nonprofit.
Perfect.
And we added that, that, that language in there is just so that we can specify for the RFP that, that they're going to need to do inspections, that they're going to need to be able to make sure that the tires are, have fresh, you know, fresh tires on there, that they've inspected for cracks, and we're looking at a third-party inspection, which may very likely be members of the Maricopa Police Department, that will just give it the once-over.
Okay, perfect. I entertain a motion if we're ready to move on this, because.
So, may I move to approve?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, item 10.4. The mayor and city councils are to discuss and possibly take action. To move, cancel, or reschedule November 6th, 2012 city council meeting. Regular and work sessions, discussion, action.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. November 6th, which is our first meeting in November, is in conflict, being that it is the, the National Election Day, and the Pinal County elections will be setting up in this area to hold the elections in this facility, and because there'll be a lot of activity, traditionally, we have not held city council meetings in conflict with the, with the elections. And so the, the recommendation by staff is, because there are some pressing issues, especially with Maricopa construction projects with the multigen and the, and the city hall, that council consider rescheduling that meeting for October 30th. Be it Tuesday night, the Tuesday night prior, same, same times, that we would just bump it one week ahead. And, but we don't know about the availability, and, and that was something that we wanted to make sure.
So we, we don't know about the availability?
Well, we, I, I don't know if we've checked, if, if members of council have, have looked at their calendars, and, and I, it was in the staff report, but I don't know if there's any feedback from the mayor, vice mayor, members of council, if anybody's available.
Yeah. The facility's available, so we're ready to move on it if we want to move it to that Tuesday. There are five Tuesdays in this month, so it would just be three council meetings, and it would just be spread the same as it would have been just adjusting it up one week, so. Yeah. Three in October, one in November. I don't have a problem with it, because especially as we come down to the New Year's, we're going to have another one that falls right on the, on the New Year's holiday. So if we cancel, and that would probably be the one we'd most likely think about canceling if we were going to go that route, so, right in the middle of the holidays. So I, I would entertain a motion to, to move it to Tuesday, October 30th. That's, I think, the best bet.
Yes, I mean. Okay, first and sec, we have a second here?
Second.
Second, thank you very much. With that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item 10.5 and 10.6 are for discussion only, but item 10.5 is the mayor and city councils' here a presentation regarding the International Code Council's 2012 International Building Codes.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'd like to just go over this overview with you. Okay, what are building codes? They are a people code. People have ideas on how to better their home businesses and entertainment environments. Building codes provide and guide the minimum standard, allowing people to make these ideas a reality while maintaining a safe environment. Building codes are first in the line of public safety, responsible for saving lives and The city legally adopted the 2000 version of the International Building Codes in 2004. Technologies, including building materials and techniques, improve over time, and as a result, building codes involve and adapt. To stay consistent with current practices and neighbor jurisdictions, staff recommends an update. And as a result, building codes involve and adapt. To stay consistent with current practices and neighbor jurisdictions, staff recommends an update. The 2012 International Codes as a group are actually a body of eight different codes that we will be adopting. International Building Code, the International Residential Code, the International Property Maintenance Code, the International Mechanical Code, the Plumbing Code, the International Fuel Gas Code, the National Electrical Code, and the International Energy Conservation Code. Updated versions of the city's currently adopted fire, building, and life safety and property maintenance codes. Most of the provisions remain the same. 2000 codes have been completely reorganized to make it easier for the users. Building codes regulate a variety of building and life safety codes for new construction. The Fire Code establishes minimum regulations for fire prevention and protection systems. Property maintenance codes spell out how properties are to be maintained for a safe, clean, and sanitary environment. The Zoning Code stipulate regulations in the city of Maricopa and residential housing development projects. These are some of the significant, oops, changes to our codes that allow greater flexibility in code interpretation, new seismic design category maps, wind designs, including new maps, exterior wall clearances to lot lines, prescriptions of roof connections to resist wind uplift forces, required clearances between townhouses, separation walls, and roof penetrations, gypsum board under non-fire resistant rated floor assemblies, wall brace and provisions have new simplified methods, extensive solar and energy saving provisions. In summary, new codes will serve to allow for local conditions aligned with the Arizona state statutes, consideration and cooperation with the local Home Builders Association initiatives, alleviate hardships on small businesses by increasing occupant load from 15 to 30, and to allow a unisex restroom in lieu of separate facilities for each sex. Okay, the next steps will be the information and documentation is available on our website. On October 16, we plan to take this for council adoption. January 1, 2013, the new codes will go into effect, except for the residential code that would go into effect on July 1 of 2013. In an attempt not to create a hardship or deeter the new construction going on in home building at the present time. Any questions?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Hey, Bill. I had a quick question. Now, if there are buildings that aren't up to code, and you said here, January 1, 2013, these, are, is there going to be grandfathered in, or are they going to have to be up to code? And if so, how long are they given?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Gussi, everything is grandfathered in. When we adopt new codes, you can go back and make everybody update them.
Unless, unless someone purchased the property, are there exceptions to that rule?
Hmm, no, even if somebody does purchase a home that was built, what would be in effect for any home is when the house was built, the codes that were in effect at the time the home was built.
I'm thinking of businesses. There's some businesses that have been here for a while. And those locations, if they're not meeting the code, are they going to have to come to code if the, there's a transaction between owners?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Gussi, no, the businesses will not have to be updated.
All right, thank you.
In fact, we made quite a few changes to help the businesses out.
Any other thoughts, questions, concerns? Perfect, thank you very much, Bill.
Okay, you're welcome.
Item 10.6, mayor and city councilors' here presentation regarding the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the Traffic Barricade Manual and the addition of fee schedules to Chapter 12 of the City Code. Chris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Give a brief presentation tonight on the aforementioned code updates. We essentially are going to be walking through the manual on uniform traffic control devices. We're going to give a brief history and a description of what those are. City of Phoenix's Traffic Barricade Manual, as well as adopting, amending Chapter 12 for the fee schedule. The manual on uniform traffic control devices, it defines the standards for traffic control devices on streets and highways. So think of the signs that are on the road, the striping that's on the road, the distance it's separated, the spacing between lines on a road. All of those standards are defined on the manual on uniform traffic control devices, including how bright a sign is, the reflectivity of the striping on the ground. So this was first published in 1971 by the FHWA and was updated in 2009. And state agencies have up to two years to adopt their own version with amendments. And Arizona Department of Transportation adopted theirs in January 2012. Again, this is the standard which all traffic control devices within the city's right-of-way are regulated to. This plays a critical role in safety and mobility of all the traveling public, whether it be through pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicular. All of these, again, are essentially having certain rights of ways to the road. One of the important things is that if we're not in conformance of this, this could cost us money on federal grants, whether it be grade separation projects, local smaller projects, safe routes to school. All these oftentimes have a federal component, and we have to be meeting those federal standards. It's important to have uniformity throughout the projects for asset tracking and the ability to maintain that, that we have a certain size stop sign on all of the roads and it doesn't vary, so we know which one to order. So that helps cut down on the cost of maintaining the roads. The City of Phoenix has a Traffic Barricade Manual, which is actually covered in the MUTCD, a certain section of it. The City of Phoenix's Traffic Barricade Manual is, it is more defined for an urban environment. It is what the state of Arizona, it's used throughout the state of Arizona. It allows us to, again, to have a document that governs just temporary traffic control. So this was first published in 1961. If you notice, that was 10 years before the MUTCD was actually created. That's, and this document uses it across the United States. Again, this is for protecting construction workers and the traveling public, pedestrians, bicyclists, prevent personal injury. It also is to prevent damages to the city's assets within the city right-of-way. So that could be your curbs, it could be traffic signal poles, it could be traffic signal cabinets, any of these damages that can occur. Again, it's to promote a safe and efficient movement of people and goods by providing traffic, safety, and guidelines for persons working in or near public right-of-way. One of the most often uses, again, is during construction projects, you will see a work zone, and then you will see barricades limiting a lane closure or maybe an entire side of a road closed, or a road closure in general, as we pointed out earlier on Wilson Road. So this is what is used to actually create those guidelines so that we have safe usage for your spacing of the cones, the taper of those cones. We are also going to amend Chapter 12 to include a fee schedule. So the Traffic Barricade Manual has violations and penalties. This was included in the 2007 Phoenix Barricade Manual. And I think one of the important questions that may come up is how do these fees match up to other cities' fees? Well, we're adopting it whole from the City of Phoenix's Barricade Manual. Many of the other cities have a fee schedule that is very similar or adopted exactly from the City of Phoenix. So ours are very comparable, if not exactly the same, as the City of Phoenix, the City of Chandler, the City of Tucson. Again, this allows, I guess, civil penalties to occur for violations of it. So the standards are enforced through, when a construction project is going through, a certain permit is required, now there's a right-of-way permit when it's in the city of right-of-way. And part of that is a temporary traffic control plan. Another is, again, through those citations and those fees. And then lastly, it's regulated through the actual engineering inspector or a public works inspector. They go out there and verify, does that plan match? So the contractor has to have the plan onsite, obviously with the city's approval. And then the inspector also has a copy of it, and they verify is it in substantial compliance. No one goes out there and measures with a wheel exactly 540 feet, substantial compliance. The fee schedule was previously, it's amending what was adopted September 2012 for the Chapter 12. So one of the, the fee schedule for parking violations was not included when this was adopted. It was mentioned in the code that it needed to be done, and we're now going ahead and adding that in there. So again, no parking is along classified arterial roads or collector roads. That is not changing, we're only including a fee schedule. Nothing that the city council adopted previously in Chapter 12 is changing, just the inclusion of the fee schedule. So no more additional and no more lessening of the previously adopted ordinance. And so our next steps are very similar. October 16 is a hopeful council adoption, and then the new codes go into effect immediately on November 1.
Perfect. Questions, council? Thoughts?
Chris, will you go back to the point you were making as far as substantial compliance?
Yes, sir.
What that means?
If there are five signs that say, road work ahead, lane closure, 35, 25, and they're spaced at 540 feet for a major street like Smith, Inc., that inspector's going to go out there and verify that those signs are out there, that the distance is approximate, or at least of best judgment. And then lastly, again, the spacing of those cones are approximately what is called out in the plan. The length of that taper is approximate in the plan. And usually that's done by counting the stones on the gutter, and it's an approximation done. It's a certain visual. You can kind of tell after being out in the field long enough, what 350 feet approximately looks like. So they verify that plan to make sure that it matches that. And if there is an issue where they don't have a plan or not approve plan, they are essentially asked to shut down work immediately, come to the city.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, well, with that, we appreciate you all coming tonight. Thank you very much. And can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Nope. We're out of here. We're gone.